All right, if we could have board members to the table, please. I believe we are seven. And Dr. Duran and his staff, I'll let you go ahead and introduce your teams and our researchers here. It's a long list of folks, so thank you for being here. This is our first session today. We have a few to go through today. So we will go ahead and let you present, share your information. I believe we're doing both the family engagement survey report as well as, if time permits, looking at the proposed draft policy for family engagement that staff has been working on. So look forward to seeing the presentation, and then we'll hold questions till the end. So if board members could just let me know if you would like to ask a question. And go ahead, and we'll have Dr. Duran, go ahead and start.
Yes, well, you've already given the basic introduction that we're going to be focused on our family engagement survey results and our draft policy. So we'll just quickly go around and introduce ourselves. Start with Renee.
Good morning. I'm Renee LaHuffman Jackson, coordinator of Family and School Partnerships.
Kathleen Waltz, executive director, professional learning and family engagement.
Good morning. Dave Blakelock, head of research with K-12 Insight.
Ray Lynette, principal at Hutchinson Elementary School.
Good morning. Alfonso Smith, associate principal, Hayfield Secondary School.
Good morning. Jeff Litz, principal, Marshall High School.
Good morning. Amelia Mitchell, Prince Whatstone Middle School in the Westville Pyramid.
So we are really excited to be here today to share with you the results of the first FCPS Division-wide Family Engagement Survey. Before I provide background about the Family Engagement Survey, a point of pride for us is that Dr. Braybrand recently was awarded the 2019 Virginia PTA Power Partner Superintendent of the Year nominated by the FCC PTA. And this award recognizes superintendents who have shown that strong family-school partnerships is key to student success. Congratulations to Dr. Braybrand. We're just going to provide a little bit of background about the survey before we get to the actual results. So we wanted to administer this survey to gather and analyze data for the Strategic Plan Caring Culture goal. This first administration, the data will be considered baseline, so we don't have any comparison data at this point in time. We collaborated with K-12 Insight, and in addition to David Blakelock, we have a couple of other members of the K-12 Insight with us today. Mike Boscarino, Strategic Senior Account Executive, he's in the back. Do you want to wave your hand? And Katie Rediger, Managing Director for the East Coast. So we appreciate them being here today. So again, this survey was administered to provide data for our caring culture goal for welcoming environment. And our aspirational statement for this particular goal is that all families will feel respected at their school. And what we're measuring is the percent of families who report feeling respected on the Family Engagement Survey. So we will have data for our next report on the caring culture goal for welcoming environment for family engagement. We started the work back in summer of 2018, and we gathered a large group of stakeholders to think through what we wanted to ask parents and families in terms of their levels of engagement in Fairfax County public schools. So you can see that we had communications and community relations, information technology, instructional services, our ombudsmen, region representation, research and strategic planning, professional learning and family engagement, and special services involved in the survey creation. We also received feedback from the FCC PTA, the Title I Parent Advisory Committee, and parent liaisons. We provided multiple ways to ensure that families had access to the survey, and we were able to get the word out about the survey, including through social media, news you choose, FCPS This Week e-newsletter, public website. Dr. Braybrand also sent out an email invitation to families, created a video, sent a letter to community leaders. Many others across FCPS, including our school board members and principals, sent out communications regarding this survey. Here are some of the accomplishments as a result of bringing all of these stakeholders together. So we developed our questions in a way that was customized for Fairfax County public schools. We were able to create the questions that aligned with our strategic plan and that were in language that was accessible by all families throughout the division. We've provided data presentations to our leadership team and our region leaders. And principals, FCPS directors and coordinators, and our family and student ombudsmen participated in Making Feedback Matter workshops where they engaged in looking at the data and then creating a plan and a goal for next steps with regard to the data. We are including the family engagement data in our school improvement and innovation plans as well. A point of pride, again, is that we created our questions and share a joint copyright with K-12 Insight. And now, school divisions in Virginia and outside of Virginia are looking at our survey questions to potentially administer within their own divisions. Tomorrow, we have invited a variety of parent and community groups to learn more about our Family Engagement Survey with a presentation and opportunity to ask questions. We have invited the Advisory Committee for Students with Disabilities, Fairfax County Council of PTAs, Fairfax County Government Chief Equity Office, Fairfax County Special Education PTA, Opportunity Neighborhoods Management Team, and the Title I Parent Advisory Council. So we have a number of people coming tomorrow to engage in that presentation. Following today's work session, we will issue a public press release about the survey results. We will have an announcement on the FCPS website, which would include the results on the Professional Learning and Family Engagement webpage, as well as the Family Engagement Resources page. We are asking schools to provide presentations to their staff and school communities when school convenes again in August and into September. Following those presentations, we are asking schools to publicize their results on their school websites. We also have some professional development opportunities coming up this fall for principals and school teams, a Family Engagement Academy course, as well as a Family Engagement Toolkit. And with that, I'm going to turn things over to David so that he can share the results of the Family Engagement Survey. So we'll need to switch to the other presentation that is loaded on Board Docs. That's correct.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to present this data and this study to you this morning. It's my honor and pleasure to be here to talk about this study with you. Again, I come from K-12 Insight. We work with about 250 school districts across the country, doing this sort of work where we're collecting stakeholder feedback to help guide district-level decision-making. As was presented, basically what we know from the research is that there's a direct relationship between family engagement and student achievement. So when you are able to increase one, you are therefore able to increase the other, and that is why we think that family engagement is so important. We worked directly with division staff members, as Kathleen said, to help develop this survey. That included a process that's referred to as cognitive testing, where we met with different stakeholder groups to share specific items, to get feedback on the construction of those items, to make sure that they were accurately measuring what it is that we were intending to measure, and that they were consistently understood by everyone. These are the concepts of validity and reliability. The areas that we are focusing in on, as far as the specific dimensions, are welcoming environment, communication, student success, advocacy, family and school partnerships, and collaboration with the community. We had the survey open for about three weeks, from March 24th to April 14th. The way we had distribution was through a variety of ways. We actually had email invitations that went out with a unique link to every member, that every parent that the school district had an email address for, parent or guardian. We also had a public URL that was available on the district's website. We also had separate URLs that were available on social media, as well as a QR code. And then we had paper surveys that were available for parents who wanted to fill them out by paper, which we entered in our office. The survey was available in Spanish, Korean, Chinese, Arabic, Vietnamese, Farsi, Urdu, and Amharic. So we tried to capture as many languages as we possibly could to increase participation and accessibility to all stakeholders. We sent out reminders to those who had the email address for on several separate occasions, which are up there. And ultimately, what we did was we worked very hard to try to increase participation. We sent a link to the district to be able to review participation by school, as well as participation through each of the channels that we had available for folks to participate through, so we could see what was being most successful and could get amped up, and see which schools may need a little bit more support to be able to increase their participation. The final thing that I'll say about participation itself was ultimately that we had a link at the end of the survey for parents who had children in more than one school, so that they could go back through and take the survey again for those additional schools. Within this particular study, the school is the unit of analysis. So what we're looking at is the aggregate district results. We've also delivered results disaggregated at the region level, pyramid level, and school level as well, as well as school level, meaning like elementary, middle school, high school. So we have the data cut a variety of ways to help the district digest and understand the data. So ultimately, it breaks them down by school level within this report, so you can look at some comparisons, as well as the overall distribution of results. A couple of things to note is that these results do not reflect random sampling. So we do not necessarily have a probability sample. So what we're looking at is these results are generalizable to those who took the survey. And I just want to reiterate, based on what Kathleen had said, is that we are ultimately moving away from our typical survey, and we're actually using this as our new Family Engagement Survey, just because we are so proud of the construction of the survey that we had with Fairfax County. It has been administered at least once in one other district, and we're looking to have it done in other districts so that we can start creating benchmarks around it. So when we look at the participation, we sent out roughly 164,000 email invitations, to which we got about 22,000 responses from, 21,000. The response rate is an estimated 13%. The reason why that is an estimation is because when you come to having multiple channels with a survey distribution, if you have a public URL, you don't necessarily have what's known as an NMAX, or a total number of people that would be taking the survey. So that's the 13% that comes from those email invitations in and of themselves. And then we see to the right of that, the paper surveys, as well as the public link response, for a total of 29,000, roughly 29,000 surveys taken. One other thing to note is that 2,038 of those responses came from parents who took the survey for an additional school. When we look at the bottom table there, we see the breakdown by the different languages there. So in descending order of language, all the way through, we ended up only getting two Amharic responses, but we will continue to, you know, try to promote that if we were to do the survey again in the future. So as Kathleen mentioned, we had the two respect questions. When we take a look at this, is, you know, how respected do you feel at this school? And how respected does your child feel at this school? 83% of parents who took the survey felt that they were respected at the school. When we take a look at the next one, it's 81% who feel that their child was respected at the school. The correlation between these two was about .7 or so, so a very strong relationship between them feeling respected and their child, they feel their child is feeling respected. When we compare this by school level, we see it fairly consistent across. One thing that we will see throughout this report is that the elementary parents typically have more favorable responses than the middle and secondary high school level parents. This is something we see consistently with our work across the country, especially with the Family Engagement Survey. The elementary environment is much warmer, it's smaller, it's much more, you know, of a family orientation. When the children get into the secondary levels, it becomes a little bit more disconnected, there's more people that they have to interact with. So to see this descending order of agreement across the different levels of school is not atypical. What we're looking at here are the reasons for celebration. When we take a look at the survey, both across the district and within the schools, the responses overall were very positive. And what these are, are the most positive responses. And these are the highest combined agree and strongly-agreed responses. So when we take a look at the welcoming of families of school of different backgrounds and cultures, that's a 92% agreement rate, which is a magnificent rate. The "I feel welcome at my child's school," 91%. So again, some very, very positive responses that we are looking at here, as far as perception of feeling welcome, respect, as well as feeling safe, and the school feeling safe. So when we think about what's going on in the media, particularly around school safety, the fact that roughly nine out of 10 parents, or yeah, nine out of 10 parents feel the school is safe, is a huge accomplishment for the district. And this may be based on some of the initiatives that you are doing as a board that are being pushed down across the district. So these are definitely things that are worth celebrating and things to be very proud When we take a look at the lowest-ranking indicators, what the theme throughout these here is, when we think about the lowest-ranking indicators, these are the highest combined strongly disagree and disagreed responses. So it takes the "don't know" response out of account. And what the theme across these is, is that parents are feeling like they're doing, being done to, as opposed to being done with. We've been talking about this quite a bit in the principal meetings, and the idea being that broadcasting information out is not necessarily family engagement. There is some level of collaboration and partnership that has to happen to include some dialogue that occurs. What we've been working on quite a bit in some of the work sessions, is this top one here, is about, you know, receiving information from the school about what you can do at home to help child, the child improve his or her learning. When we've unpacked this in some other places around focus group areas, what we've found, what we've come to learn is that education is different for children today than it was for when their parents went to school. The technology is different, the math curriculum is different. So it's a matter of trying to educate parents about education itself, to help them be able to improve their child's learning. The rest of them, for the most part, are very much collaboration issues. So having some dialogue around things like goals, student strengths, those sorts of things, to have some give and take associated with that, to be able to allow us to increase in those areas. When we take a look at the key insights here, we'll be hitting a lot of these as we go through. But when we take a look at the top one there, we cover that with the respect. And then we sort of see this as we trickle through. I'm not going to sit here and read them all to you, as we'll hit them as we go through it. But it is a matter of a lot of celebrations there. Probably the lowest-ranking dimension is going to be the collaboration with the community. And really, what collaboration with the community means is not necessarily just collaboration within the school community, but the collaboration with the community at large. So parent perception of how well the school is able to engage with the broader community in which we sit. In the work that we do, we tend to see schools, particularly elementary schools, as being a sort of community hubs. And so what does community partnership look like between the school and the community in which it serves? These are the remainder of them. So, you know, we take a look at the partnership issue again, as well as, you know, some "don't know" around workshops. You'll see a high percentage of "don't know" responses around workshops having useful information. And a lot of what that is attributed to, if I've not attended a workshop, I'm not necessarily going to know if it's useful. So it becomes a matter of, how can we make those workshops more accessible and more attractive for parents to attend them? So as I mentioned, these are the overall dimension scores. Welcoming environment had the highest dimension rating, which we saw in that highest-ranking indicator slide. It actually had the highest ones around the welcoming environment, as well as the idea being around welcoming of different cultures. As I mentioned just a moment ago, the collaboration with the community had the lowest combination of agree and strongly-agreed responses. And so we'll unpack that as we go through the rest of the presentation. This is the breakdown of the dimension scores by school level. Very similar to what I talked about with the respect issue, we see the elementary parents having a higher rating than the rest of the school level. So it sort of descends as you go down the grade levels. As far as welcoming environment, again, these responses are overwhelmingly positive. So when we see that third one down there, around school leaders inspire families to be active participants in the school and community, again, that gets into that partnership and collaboration piece that I mentioned a few minutes ago, so that whole doing with. However, I do want to reiterate again, "I feel welcome at my child's school," "my child feels safe at school," "school is inviting," and "feels like a place where I belong." All of these are very positive things and ways that you should be celebrating, that I hope is going to be broadcast throughout the division community. This is one that is very unique, because when we see it broken down, it is fairly consistent across the school levels. So it is very positive, not only at the elementary school, but at the secondary school levels as well. Very similar here. Again, we feel like that is very inviginating, the school is safe, across the different school levels as well. As far as communication goes, again, some fairly positive information here. When we look at that second one down here, again, it gets into that doing with as opposed to doing to, where the school encourages parents and educators to share information, such as student strengths and learning preferences. So it is an opportunity for improvement sitting there as well. However, when we take a look at information provided to me, it's easy to understand, that's an 81% or 91% agreement with that. So that's a very positive indicator to look at as well, is that the information that is going out is very easily accessible to those who took the survey. When we break it down by school level, you know, we again see that decline that comes from elementary on through the secondary. And when we see student success, we take a look at the different opportunities for these students' school to work with it. Again, it gets more into that collaboration aspect of things, so I'm not going to harp on that for too terribly long. But we do see, you know, school offers appropriate resources, sitting at 77%. Very consistent across the school has expectation, high expectations for my child. So roughly four out of five of the parents within your division who took the survey feel that the school has high learning standards, which is a very positive outcome to have, for sure. And this is, again, some more breakdown by school level. I think one of the starker things to note is that bottom one right there, receiving enough information about what they can do at home to help improve my child's, their learning. We see a pretty stark contrast from the elementary down to the secondary level. And again, that gets into the education, about education aspect for parents. As far as advocacy goes, one of the reasons that we saw a little bit of a lower agreement rate at the dimension level on this is because there is a very high percentage of "don't know" responses. "Don't knows" can be interpreted by one of three things. One, either the parent hasn't had an opportunity to experience it. Two, it becomes an issue of something that you are doing, but it needs to have a little bit of a better marketing campaign. Or three, it is a proxy for disagreement. In this case, when we see this high percentage of "don't know" around receiving information for unwelcome, unexpected transitions, and the workshop information being useful, these are likely issues that our parents have not experienced, which is why they have such a high "don't know" rate. What I would take away from this, as far as the comparison, is the comparison between active agreement to active disagreement on this one. And as you can see, the active agreement on these is very, very high as compared to disagreement. So those that are working with these, that are experiencing them, have very favorable perceptions of them. The advocacy continued on that second one there, the whole idea of a 24% "don't know" rate. If I don't have a problem, I might not necessarily be needing to be aware of the procedure to resolve problems. So the idea is that you have 76% has ways to share concerns, and then the active agreement versus disagreement on that second one there about procedures to resolve problems, again, very much in favor of the positive response. Breaking this down by school level, these are actually fairly consistent across the board, across the school level, which is also very positive as well. When we get into family and school partnerships, that 88% of opportunities to volunteer at their child's school is very positive, for sure. Roughly nine out of 10, or four, yeah, roughly nine out of 10. This top one there, again, sticks with our theme of the whole partnership aspect of doing And breaking this down by school level, the elementary, of course, has the higher percentage of volunteer opportunities. Typically, a little bit easier for parents to get in and have opportunities to do it than it is at the secondary level. But we see it being somewhat consistent across the school levels for the partnership around key decisions. And again, this is the collaboration with the community. So I receive enough information from my child's school about community services that help families, and this school provides me with opportunities to connect with other families. Again, it's communication within the school, as well as access to resources within the community as a whole, whether it be sports activities, services that need, that the child needs outside of school, those sorts of things. We do see some decent percentage of "don't know" to these, because again, if you don't need, for the first one, if you don't necessarily need external services, you might not know. For that second one there, that "don't know," I would see that "don't know" as a proxy for disagreement. When we see this broken down, again, at the elementary level, particularly for the opportunities to connect with other families, that small, family-like environment, that more community-based area, certainly has a higher percentage of opportunities. We asked parents to rate their top three desired communication methods. And so the breakdown of it was this, 95% selected email, 40% selected text message, and 33% wanted an in-person meeting, with another 30% who wanted a phone call. So what this says is the email information, typically what we see is, parents want to know three different types of information about what's going on at school. Concept number one is they want to know about events, activities, sports, those sorts of things. Concept number two is they want to get an understanding of the overall curriculum and what the sort of children as a whole are learning. And concept number three is that they want to know how their children are doing, so very specific to their child. Some of those can be accomplished very easily through an email, where the information is being received. Some of them do require some actual conversation and dialogue, which gets into that in-person meeting and phone call aspect of things. We asked a question about accessibility of interpretation services. So we asked a question if they've needed interpretation services. If they said yes, they got the question on the right there, which is basically, you'll see the big difference in N-count there. And so 89% of parents who indicated that they needed interpretation services said that they were available when they needed them. And then we have an appendix here of some participation. And it's important to note that these percentages are not percentages as far as response rate goes, but they are percentage of the construction of all survey responses. So basically, it gives us a proxy to understand under or overrepresentation. So as you see here, you know, the high is with Region 1, where we had 22% of the responses came from Region 1. For Region 3, 16% of the responses came from Region 3. We also have it broken down by pyramid level, to take a look across the board at that. And keeping in mind that certain regions and pyramids have more students than others, so that's going to be taken into account when interpreting these results as well. And then the overall school level, for percentage of the entire results.
So at this time, we're going to hear from our principals in terms of their response to the survey, and any high-leverage family engagement strategies that have been successful at your schools. And we'll start with Amelia Mitchell. Thank you.
Now it's on. Thank you very much. Thanks, again, for inviting me to speak with you about this Family Engagement Survey. When we got our results, our leadership team had an opportunity to sit down and talk about these results. Afterwards, we brought it to our entire leadership teams, which consist of our CLT leaders, our administrators, our ESPIS, our T-Spec, and our PTSA president. And so then we had an opportunity to look at it all together. We were really excited, because our families do feel welcomed coming into our school. I think it was about 93% of our parents reported that they felt welcome, as well as their students. Our highest indicator was information provided. 96% of our families said the information provided was able, easy and able to understand. So we thought that was a huge celebration, and then we turned. So we thought that was a huge celebration, and then we turned the page. Okay. So then when we turned the page to look at our lowest indicators, one that kind of stood out to us was that our parents, our low indicators was that they didn't receive information about community support or community resources. And it was something we hadn't thought about. We were like, wait, you want to know about community stuff, right? So we started thinking about, okay, what does that look like? What would, what would we be able to provide for our parents to help them with that particular concern? They wanted more information about social-emotional, how do they support their students socially-emotionally? And we were thinking about that, and we thought, wow, you know, we really contact parents whose children are in crisis. You know, those are the parents who we provide information and resources to. Why don't we provide more information to all of our parents? You know, and it's, so it becomes more of a reactive than a proactive approach. So from that information, we did decide to make family engagement one of our SIP goals, our student improvement goals. So we have three goals this year, and under caring community, it's really about family engagement. And so we've kind of taken this whole aspect of family engagement and started thinking about, what are the things that we can do differently to have our parents become more engaged in the middle school? We joke at the middle school level because we think that's the time they take the two-year break, you know? Because once you go to high school, you got to get involved with all the boosters and all of that kind of stuff, and you get more involved. But when they come to middle school, they just kind of back off a little bit. And every year, I say to our parents, no, don't take your hand off the wheel, this is not the time, they need you more than ever now. But that kind of just goes right over everybody's head. So one of the things we're doing differently is in the past, we've taken a community walk to one of our communities that we felt was our most needy community. This year, we'll do welcome walks in all five of our communities. We'll divide our team up. We plan to go on the Tuesday that our teachers return because we have back-to-school night on Wednesday. And so with that walk, we want to provide our parents, all of our parents that we can reach, some information about how to access some of these things that appeared in our engagement survey. Social-emotional needs, community resources, how do you get in contact with us? You know, what is the Facebook page? What's the Snapchat? Like, how do you really get in, you know, informed about what's happening at our school? I do a weekly newsletter, and so I feel like that's a great communication tool, but I need to reach out to our stakeholders and find out, am I just wasting my time four hours a week writing this letter and no one gets it or understands it? Because it appears that that's not a big way to reach our staff. And so Renee had provided for all of us this chart that had the high-yield strategies, and back-to-school night was one of those that we thought was huge, high-yield, and was right there in the middle. And so we're also kind of revamping how we do back-to-school night and what information we provide to parents. So again, it's part of our SIP goal this next year. I'm looking forward to seeing how it improves our family engagement across the board, because I think there's more work that we can do and be more proactive than reactive. I think that was a big message that came through for us in our survey. So I will let someone else talk, and then I can answer questions as well.
Thank you, Amelia. Jeff, would you like to go next?
Sure. Good morning. If I need to speak up, please tell me. So this past year, I was fortunate enough to hire a new Sosa. This gentleman, who is Hispanic, Spanish-speaking, has been fabulous. And one of the things that I charged him with and my dean of students with, my whole admin team, really, I am convinced that more and more, we need to go out to our communities and stop relying upon our communities to come to us, because we have segments of our population who are afraid to come to school, either because they're uncomfortable, there's no one who speaks their language, what have you. And so we went from two years ago, maybe doing four or five home visits, to doing almost 100 home visits this past school year. And that translated into a lot of our Spanish-speaking families working with our parent liaison to come in and take some classes with us. So my parent liaison from last year ran three parent sessions of Families Reunite with the help of EduFuturo. She ran 10 sessions of the Parent Project classes. So we had families at Marshall that came one night a week for 10 weeks from Marshall, Fair Hill, Lemon Road, Graham Road, and Justice. And I participated in four of those 10 sessions, and the families, to see those families and how appreciative they were, to be able to learn about our school system in a non-threatening environment in their native language, was something that was really priceless for me and opened up my eyes to, you know, the fact that every parent wants their child to do well in school, and we have to ensure as a school system that we're inviting every family into our school, and if we're not inviting them into our school, we're going to them to assist them with whatever it is they need to come involved in our school community. Throughout the year also, I, I offer principal-parent coffees. I always have a translator there to welcome our families in. We've run parent view and student view sessions in multiple languages. We ran an FCPS-on session in Spanish. We recognize that we have families that don't always have the means to take care of their families, so we modeled what we call the Marshall market off of what Justice High School is doing to be able to provide additional food and services to about 45 of our families who are in need of that throughout the year. I wanted to put the onus on teachers a little bit more to always stress the positives, so I stole this from Annandale. I stole this from Tim Thomas. So I gave all of my teachers little cards, 25 cards at the beginning of the year, and it says, attention, you have a superb statesman in your household, congratulations on all of your hard work. And I gave each teacher the address labels for all of their students in their classes, and so the teacher could simply write a note on it, slap the address label on it, and send it home to the family. And it was amazing that this little, what this little gesture does for families who, you know, sometimes maybe don't get the positive phone calls home as much as, as much as they should. And, and as a principal, that's something that I, that I encourage as well. This is something that I want to continue to work on in terms of going out to our families, but also bringing our families in. You know, it's, unfortunately, it's no surprise to me with regard to some of our lower results in terms of our, you know, we ask parents about and educators to share information about our strengths and learning preferences. I have a 15-year-old who went to an elementary school in FCPS, and I remember at the beginning of every school year, I would get that, that form, tell me about your child, what are their likes, what are their dislikes, what are their strengths? So I've already been talking to my admin team about how we might try to do that with 2,200 kids in a high school. And I think what was said earlier is really the truth. The complexity and the size of high schools make some of this very challenging, but I think with effective Sosa's, effective parent liaisons, and effective school-wide goals, we can continue to improve upon the hard work and the good work that I think we're already doing.
Thank you, Jeff. Alfonso?
Good morning. Thank you again for having me. At Hayfield Secondary, and looking at the data that we have before us, one of the things that we were very proud of, we, we celebrate our diversity. And our diversity means so many different things at Hayfield. The fact that we're a secondary school included, and serving a middle school population as well as a high school population, grade seven through 12, that alone, we're very proud of the fact that our, our stakeholders feel that they're welcome at our school. We're talking about a lot of different cultures that are represented at our school as well with the grade levels. So the fact that the children are connecting to it and trusting at least one caring adult in our building is something that we take pride in, and something that we, that we strive for each year. The safety, the safety indicator, again, with things going on in our country as they are presently, the fact that our students are coming to school and that they're feeling that that's a safe place, that, that's huge for us. And looking at the lower indicators, one of the things that we try to do, we start each year with a Hayfield community event, like Mr. Litts mentioned as well, we too want to go out into the community. We've noticed that we have different populations that for whatever reason, coming to school, even those of the over 21-year-old variety, is not always something that they're excited to do. So we are making conscious efforts to go out to our community. We start each year with two community events. With the size of our, our population, we do one down in Lorton for our, we have a large population of our students that come from the Lorton area. And then we do one in the Hayfield Farms Park area as well, where we go out to the community. We bring a tent, we bring a grill, we bring some, some of our Hayfield paraphernalia. Our administrators go out along with our counseling staff, along with some of our teaching volunteers and some of our coaches. And we make ourselves available there before anything has happened at the school during the course of the school year, to just make ourselves available to meet and greet families, to say hello. We're out there with our shorts and our t-shirts on, we're not with the shirt and tie, but we're going out into the community and just really making a conscious effort to make sure that they, they can talk to us and that we're approachable, and that they know some of our processes. One of the things, as we look at the data, and it says that our school encourages parents and educators to share information such as our, our student strengths and learning preferences. That's one of the areas that we feel that we're lacking and that we're going to have to do a lot better with. That is something that we know that our elementary schools in our pyramid, they do a great job with, so we're going to really have to collaborate with them to solicit some better ways for us. One of the things we've started considering, and knowing that we have our, our back-to-school night, we have our huge Hawk Flight event to start our school year, we're looking at maybe doing some surveys for parents to figure out, because if we looked at the other data further along the page where it says that one of their top preferences in being contacted is through email, we noticed with some of the events that we've had, some of the workshops that we had, they're very lightly attended. So in trying to make that, and identifying the fact that there's different ways that they want to be communicated to, and we need to make sure that we make ourselves available to do that, and not just, we have some that want to be communicated in person. So we have to find some creative ways, again, to make those workshops more attractive. And so we'll be collaborating with our different, our schools within our pyramid to find different ways to do that.
Thank you very much. And last, Ray?
Good morning. I'm really excited to be here today and also really surprised, frankly, because when this first survey first started coming out, I thought, oh my gosh, here we go, a family engagement survey. Now, we, we survey everything, right? And with 1,100 students in, in the elementary school, we're on principle, there's, it's a big school, we're also 98% language minorities. So I thought, wow, first of all, this is really challenging to get the results and however we're going to kind of show what we're doing. And lo and behold, our extraordinary results, I guess, placed us here today. And we are excited about much of the work that we're doing at this school. And I do think about the school board members that have been to our school before, giving out coats and being part of the work that's there, also being at the, the food kickoff and stuff. We do a barbecue every day. Hutchison is one of the largest sites for the barbecue. We serve about 300 kids a day at the barbecue. Our rec pack is also the largest in the county with about 200 kids in rec pack. So there's, there's a lot of great work that's happening there. And just sitting here today and listening to folks and the other strategies that are working, I felt really great about some of the work that I was doing for the welcoming school environment and also just families feeling engaged and welcome in the school. But I think pretty much those were consistent things that were really strong across the county, and those were more my actions. What was really extraordinary, I think, compared to some of the things across the county that needed more growth, is actually the work that my parent liaisons are doing at the school, which really is extraordinary work, and we are strongly supported. Again, Hutchison has 98% language minorities. We have more, because of the size of the school, we have more WIDA assessments than any other elementary school in Fairfax County. And so we, we do have about 35 hours a week for parent liaisons for the one, and then we have an additional parent liaison that, we currently have about 20 hours a week, and I'm working really hard with Renee to get an additional five hours or so. So if anybody could be helpful in, in me getting that, that would be great. But some of the work that we have, and I will highlight today, I, I did prepare some resources if you want to pass around, because I want to highlight some of the work that Kathleen's office is doing with family partnerships, and some of the strategies that we've done at Hutchison, very aligned and targeted with the work that they're doing in their office. And so some of the things that we do at the school, if, whenever you get your packet, if you'll flip to the very back, they've shared with us challenges to family engagement in schools. And so I went to the workshops this year, and, you know, they looked at cultural challenges for families and economic challenges for families, personal experience challenges for families, language challenges. And so as a school team, we met and discussed and talked about, well, if each of these are areas that families are often challenged in being engaged in their partnership with the schools, why don't we reflect and, and ask ourselves, what are we really doing in those areas to make sure that we are overcoming those challenges as best that we can? And so we, we took the research that was provided, again, by the Family Partnership Office, which is located in the back of your packet, to really map out what are some of those challenges. On the page behind it, which is the final page in the packet, they look at, what are the things that we do to support from the bottom of the pyramid, cultural survivors for immigrant families that are new to the country, again, with the number of minorities that we're serving at Hutchison? We really had to look at, what were we doing to support cultural survivors? And work our way up towards the cultural leaders, which is the highest level. And I think when working with other Title I principals, we found that many of us were doing a lot of work around cultural survivor strategies. In other words, providing the meals for the homeless. In other words, providing the backpacks and the coats and the school supplies, those things that are just, how am I going to get through every day? And I think our families are consistently showing that we are well-supporting them in those areas, but we can always be stronger. But looking up at the highest level of cultural leader, that's really looking at, how, how do you, once you're here as an immigrant family, also see that you can be a leader within your community? And what are the work, what is the work that we're doing that's bringing families together and showing them that not only do they matter, but that their voice matters too, and they can be an advocate? And so some ways that my school supports that already is being part of the WINS group. I know, I have several people from my school that go, and they encourage moms to go to the, the WINS groups. But another thing that thought about and made the survey meaningful for us is that although our results were, were very high across the entire survey, one of the areas that was the most, most growth for us, which was only an 83% agreement, was that do we connect families with one another? And so when I think about, how much do we do that? You know, I think it's really important data, whenever you look at it and you say, you know, I know this to be true already. We do a great job engaging the school with us. They do feel comfortable talking to us and coming in, and, you know, sometimes they continue to come back even after they've left the elementary school. But how much have we really engaged them with one another? I think about when we worked with students that were there not attending school, and you say, hey, what's going on? And they say, well, I'm, I'm having a hard time getting my child to school because my work time changed, and I, you know, I don't trust sending them to walk by themselves, what am I going to do? So how do we then identify neighbors for them and find people that they can trust? So I think the survey has helped us highlight some things that we can look at and, and work harder on, but I think they've also highlighted some of our areas were really strong. I did prepare a lot, prepare a lot of stuff today because I didn't know exactly what all folks would want. But on other pages, I have highlighted, you know, different things that we've done for our community outreach initiatives, which are highlighted in the packet. And then, you know, which, with each one of those charts that I created, we also outlined the strategies that Hutchison does in each one of those areas, if you wanted to use them as a resource for working with other schools. But perhaps what I'm most excited about at the school, and then I'll finish here, I promise, is the, the parent classes. There's a whole kind of syllabus of classes. And that's one of the things that I'm really proud of. Again, the school is, you know, one of the largest elementary schools in Fairfax County with over 1,100 students. When I first got there, the need was great, but so was the support, and I really just had to get my own hands around, what are all the things that we're doing? So I needed to organize this set of classes for myself, so I understood what all we were doing, why we were doing them, who they were each for, and really, many of our parents do take multiple different ones of these classes. And they are strongly supported, again, by our parent liaisons. Even Claudia Thomas from the Family Partnership Office has come out and done our Families Reunite class, where we bring families together who have been separated. And so the work has really been strong in those areas. And that's one of the things that I'm most proud of, is the parent workshops that we do at the school. So that's, those are the things that are happening at Hutchison and what's most high-leverage there, and thank you again.
Well, we're very proud of our principals and their perspectives on the family engagement survey, but also those high-leverage strategies that you're using in your schools. Thank you so much. With that, this concludes the first part of the presentation, which is the family engagement survey results. The next part is around a draft policy. So I think, would it be okay if we paused here for some questions?
Yeah, let's go ahead. I have, most of my colleagues would like to ask some questions, but first of all, big round of applause before we continue to our principals and our staff. Thank you. It was very, very impressive work, and I think you've all taken different avenues and ways to hone it together and figure out your next steps. So before we go on, and we're about halfway through, so I think we'll be able to do a first round of three-minute questions. The first three I have on my list are Illyon, Sandy, and Megan. So Illyon?
Thank you. Since I only have three minutes, I'm going to go pretty quickly and ask you questions, and then you can hold off answering my questions until I'm done first. If I'm, if I run out of time, I'm going to ask for a go-back. If I run out of time, I'm going to ask for a go-back. But I am generally known as a person of a few words, so I may not be using up over three minutes. With that said, excellent presentation, really good data. I was really happy to see that we did this, you know, family engagement survey and having an opportunity to have a discussion on this topic. The very first question is this. With the data collected from this survey, how would, in your mind, the schools be able to use the data to do anything differently from what they have been already doing? I mean, it's wonderful to hear from principals about the things they have been already doing, but from, you know, if someone could tell me how these data going to make a difference and what goes on on the ground level? That's the first question. And secondly, I guess we'll be talking about, in a draft, school board policy a little bit later on, but besides discussing this policy, what are some other things that school board should be doing with the data given to us? And another question is, I think this goes to David, and good to see you, David, that since you've worked with, now you are working, what, 2,500 different school districts?
Two hundred fifty.
Two hundred fifty in the school districts. You alluded that, you know, a lot of the data that are collected from the survey mirror what is going on nationwide, and whether any piece of the data that's been presented to us stands out compared to nationwide data, whether it's very positive or pretty bad, I think I would like to know. And the next question has to do with number of responses and number of requests that's been sent out. This is more technical, you know, questions whether, I see 16,000, was that 16,000 request that went out? Yeah, 16,000. 16,000? No, 164,000, what am I saying? 164,000. Is that, is that, is that number of email accounts that we sent the survey out to? So whether that's, because, you know, if the school system has, you know, more than one parent per family to send out, you know, some of the families might have received a multiple request and only one parent might have filled out the response. And another question has to do with interpretation services. I'm out of my time, so put me on go-back.
Do you have one more?
I may have a few more, so put me on go-back. So those are the questions.
Thank you. So your first question was around, how will schools use data to make a difference? And what I would say is that the family engagement survey data is loaded into EDSL, so principals can use the data, principals and their school teams can use the data to formulate goals on their school improvement and innovation plans around caring culture. And so when schools come to the Making Feedback Matter workshops, which we held in May, June, and we just had one this morning, they have an opportunity to look at the data that's very positive, but also those pieces of data that may lead to next steps. And it's about that data that would lead them to their next steps. And I think for the most part across the division, we're looking at collaboration, collaboration with parents, as opposed to, as David said, doing to parents, it's about doing with parents. So as a result of those workshops, principals and their teams walk away with a plan that they can implement immediately. And some of those principals also use that plan to inform their school improvement and innovation plan. So that's what I would say in terms of using the data to make a difference. And Renee, did you have anything to add to that?
The other thing around the plan that the schools are creating, us implementing the dual-capacity framework and making sure that what we do around family and community engagement is always linked to learning, because that's the only way we're going to continuously see student growth.
And I know Dr. Ivy wanted to add something as well?
Sure. I just wanted to add that our school improvement and innovation plans have all been revised, and they now align with our new strategic plan. And so the goals center around student success and caring culture, and family engagement is under caring culture. And so as schools are getting their data and analyzing it, as the regions are reviewing the data, they are, region office staff are meeting with schools and they're determining what those goals might be. I will also say that this can greatly inform pyramid work. So while we have schools that are analyzing their data, pyramids will be analyzing the data and more and more. You heard excellent examples here today of pyramid outreach to communities, and more and more we are encouraging that as well. And the other thing I wanted to inform the board of, and you asked the question, how can the board use this data? And I think one piece of it is fully understanding the data, you've gotten the division-wide overview, but in late August and September, the region offices will be meeting with the magisterial school board members to go over their school and pyramid data. And Dr. Zuluaga and myself will be meeting with the three at-large members to go over in more depth the data overall.
And Scott, go ahead.
If I could, real quick, Kathleen, check me if I'm right, and if I'm wrong, call me out. This is the first system-wide collection of parent engagement data we've ever done in Fairfax County, so it's the first system collection of data. It is now the first time we've had parent involvement indicators in our school system strategic plan. So that's why this is transformative. We're collecting the data system-wide, it's in our strategic plan system-wide. You heard Amelia just say she's aligning her school improvement plan to the metrics around parent engagement. We've had these best practices for years and years. Now, we're going to implement with system fidelity, and that's what we've been talking about for the last two years on a host of issues. So I think this is going to set us up to do even more in parent engagement than we've done before.
And if I can add, we're looking at the first-ever draft policy around family engagement.
And just to foreshadow, we're doing that, partly, I think Sandy brought it up months ago, a year ago, and we pulled, all of our Title I schools, because of federal policy, have to have a family engagement policy. We pulled the data of all our Title I schools as a whole, every Title I school on every question outperformed other Fairfax County schools. So the existence of a policy, and this is for the board, the existence of a policy itself raises the focus for the school. So we're very excited about this work, and these principals have done an outstanding job today sharing what they've been doing individually. What we're about to do is take this to scale.
Mr. Bladlock, I don't know if you wanted to answer his K-12 question?
Yes, please. I heard two questions there directed at me, first being, how does this data, how do these data compare nationwide? So I've got two answers to that question. The first answer is that most of these questions were constructed specifically for this division. So we don't necessarily have benchmark data against them. However, I'm hoping that, you know, should we do this project again, at that point we will, because as I said, this is going to become our standard for us to work with. The second one is, when we think about anecdotally, are there specific questions that stand out as being higher than what we see nationwide? We did borrow a question or two from other surveys that we use, and the one that really stands out, and again, this is anecdotally, that is higher than what we see, is the, this school is safe question. Typically, we see a lower agreement percentage with that, and the fact that you guys are sitting, like, I think it was somewhere between 89 and 91% of parents who took the survey, that's a very positive thing to celebrate. Again, especially since what we see in schools nationwide, the fact that in a division this large, that that is the perception of school safety, is an amazing feat and something to be very proud of. The other question we had was around participation. So we sent out 164,000 roughly emails. It was every email that the district had provided. So it could have been mom and dad, mom and dad could have taken it, mom could have taken it, dad could have taken it. Our approach to surveying is rather than doing a probability sample, where we're doing a representative sample, we do a census sample. And the reason that we approach it from a census sample is because we want everyone to have a voice, a potential for everyone to be able to hear or have some input into it. Conversely, you know, we do have school, we have parents who have multiple children, and either at different schools or in the same school, so it does become a little squishy as far as, you know, what the true representation is across the board. What I will say, the number I will throw out, is that had we done a probability sample of a district this large, our sample size would have actually been 1,067, based on what we see in the literature as being representative. So we had, you know, roughly, what's that?
I call that a nugget. So you're saying statistically, you only needed, what, 1,600?
Yeah, 1,000.
And we got 21,000.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Well, actually, you got 29,000. So you did, you know, because we did the census sample, that's there, but with a probability sample, it would have been roughly 1,100, so we got much more than that. So there's some chance that had we done a probability sample, we would have gotten the same parents. So that's my response to the sampling question. I hope it answered it.
Thank you. I have Sandy followed by Megan and Karen Kiskemara.
Thanks very much. This is an excellent presentation and a lot of great news in here, so thank you for all the excellent work. I was going to start by talking about the family engagement policy, which I know Kathleen and Renee, you've been working on for some time, so kudos to you for that. I guess we'll be talking about that in a minute. We know that these relationships are so critical with our parents, so the fact that we're moving forward and drilling down and seeing where we can, where we're doing it in a really great way. I love this, that you brought this entire packet for us to see what Hutchinson is doing, so thank you for that. Some of the things that you've mentioned, actually, Mr. Moon asked several of my questions, so I'll make a couple of comments. You mentioned, several of you mentioned parent liaisons, and that, as my colleagues know, has been a passion of mine, you know, the critical importance of the parent liaisons and the extent to which we can provide more time, more language support, I'm all for that. So anything we can do from the board level, I think that those individuals are absolutely critical. I know at my schools, at every one of my schools, they're absolutely critical, and I'm glad we are now treating them as the professionals that they are, because they truly are. Food security, when we talk about, this is something else that the board is going to look at further in the fall, one of our next steps in with the caring culture was, we do so much, and several of you mentioned the breakfast, the lunches, but some of us are concerned about, do we do anything at winter break, for example? Do we do anything at spring break for our families where really the only meal that some of these children are getting is at school? So I do think that one of the things I'd like to look at is the gaps in that and see if there's more we can do. I think we're doing a great job in the summer programs, the summer barbecues are fantastic, and I'm delighted to hear that you have such high participation there, too. And with that, I think, actually, Frances, you answered my question about, you know, following up with board members about, you know, the individual results, so I will very much look forward to that. And other than that, I'm going to have more to ask about the policy, but, you know, I completely support that. I was surprised when we sat down to learn we didn't have one, an overall policy, so great that we're doing that.
Any follow-ups or comments on that? Yes, go ahead. Principals, please feel free to add in any moment.
Actually, at Hayfield, I didn't mention, we do have a hawk pantry for that purpose. One of the things that we do is we take donations from our community. We've received a lot of different options. We have a local, I'd say it's a bakery. We get donations of bread before their expiration date that we make available to our students, to our families as well. You mentioned during the breaks, the Christmas break, the spring break, we have opportunities for students to come and discreetly pack backpacks with some of those items that we have in our hawk pantry for them to be able to take home to their families.
That's wonderful to hear. Do you know if this is a widespread thing that a lot of schools do, or is this just kind of an individual school by school?
I believe it varies from school to school, depending on the need. I know there's something that one of our teachers brought to our school the year before this past year, and so we've really taken off with that. We've established a location in our building. We've had some tweaks that we have to make because students want to visit that pantry during times that we need them in class. Imagine that. But, you know, so just things, different things that we're working, but we're working to meet the need.
Thank you. I have Megan.
Let's speak to that real quick. So Hutchinson, we do have multiple community partners that support the school, one being Flourish United Methodist Church, and at times their Help Hungry Kids program, it serves anywhere from 115, at one point, we had 300 kids that were getting the weekend backpack meals that were going home. And those are the things that go in the kids' backpacks, and many schools do that and they have community partnerships that help them. Those programs are really great, just try to see if there's any sort of grant programs where we may be able to support something like that, where food service is able to send something like that home to kids. Because when I think about, when I first started at Hutchinson and I looked towards DC public schools who were on the news when we were out of school for all the snow, and they, you know, were in the spotlight for saying, well, we opened up our doors so the kids could get there and they could eat. Although that sounds really good, when you look closely and you really think about a family who has multiple kids and there is this much snow on the ground, although it looks like we did a great thing by opening up the school doors and getting people there, it may not in reality really meet the need. And so as much as we can, try to rely on those backpack efforts to try to get that food into the homes and where the kids can prepare them. Because the other part is, we don't want the kids to show up on a snow day and then slip. That's one of the other whole reasons why we're closed to begin with. So just to kind of think about those programs and how we can leverage any sort of federal funding or state funding to try to meet the needs and also have the food go into the homes is really helpful.
Thank you. Megan, followed by Karen Kiskemara, and then Tammy.
Great. I'm going to do something a little unusual before I go into my remarks and questions. I'd like to invite Armando Perry, our ombudsman, to this chair here since it's open. And as many of you know, Armando is our ombudsman for the first time this year, and I did touch base with Armando and Francisco about doing this, but I would like for Armando to just provide some reflection to the board and all of us here, looking at this survey results versus what you found in the, I believe it was 300-plus cases that came to your office this year. How do they kind of align or show different needs in terms of how we're serving our families and the concerns that families are bringing to your office?
Well, thank you for the opportunity to come and share some of the experience. This will be a short preview of my October 14th work session presentation, so if you hear something that you'd like to know more about, tune in on October 14th. I think the structure of the survey hits upon a number of the issues that parents share in the almost 400 calls that we've received this year. It hit upon, if you looked at the beginning of the survey information, it talked about that welcome environment and parents feeling that they have that connection to school, and that there are certainly parents who are contacting our office because either A, they don't know to whom to go, so that relationship hasn't been built yet for that particular parent, or perhaps there have been some challenges in their communication or their experience with the school. And it might be differing definitions of what does student success mean, it might be differing definitions about how do we communicate effectively and what is the role of the parent in school? So it's, what my experience has been is that when the parent is contacting us, because either A, they don't know where to go, or B, they don't have the relationship, the challenge that that parent, the parent is looking for someone to go with whom they can build that relationship with, and they're coming to us and they're looking to kind of understand the rules of how do I access what's available? The advocacy role that was mentioned in the report is one of the other topics that comes in. How do I advocate? And what if school and I disagree on what is the, what are the desired outcomes? And perhaps the last, I didn't, knowing that I certainly don't want to take up the majority of the time, is the importance of time and the investment of energy to build that relationship. I think for most of our parents, those relationships are built easily and with what we typically do in a school. It's about finding the time to build that relationship with the parent who maybe is not connected, who is disenfranchised. And... And it's very common in my office to spend 45 minutes on the phone with a parent, just understanding the challenge and understanding their perception and their needs. And I can just imagine with all of the great work that our principals and their staffs are doing, how hard it is to find that time, which is going back to the point of the parent liaisons, to have someone who's dedicated to do that outreach, who has the time to listen and communicate with parents. I just think it points out one of the, you know, the needs that we have.
Excellent. Thank you, Armando. And I'm sorry for putting you on the spot the last minute, but that was extremely helpful to me. When I look at the survey results, I want to first thank K-12 on slide three, where you acknowledge what I think is really important, that because this wasn't random sampling, you really can't generalize these results as speaking for all of Fairfax County families. But I also want to compliment you for taking the census approach. I do think Dr. Braybrand, in the end, starting something like this, we want to have as many families access this as possible. I'm a little disappointed that we customized it so much in a Fairfax County schools kind of culture, that as a result, we had nothing to really benchmark for our first year on this. But I'm also encouraged to know that K-12 is looking at what we've done here in Fairfax as yet again another way to model this for other school divisions. So I do think that certainly our benchmark in the end is, how are we doing against ourselves and proving every way? Before I run out of time, also want to say to each and every principal, it's inspiring to hear the great things you're doing for your families. As a trained social worker, everything you've spoken to about how we connect and engage with our family, and why I've been advocating for ombudsmen like Armando, is because I truly believe when we make those connections, we then allow for student success. So I really do want to celebrate a lot of what this is. And then finally, I guess I would just say that we will continue to look at ways that we help our families find those connections. And I also appreciate that we want to look at how we can standardize a best practice approach from what you've all described in what you do. And I'll just echo what Armando said. In my eight years on serving on the school board, I find that when I am able to have those conversations with our families, allow them to feel the heard, it's amazing what we can accomplish together. So thank you again for being a best practice model for us today and bringing your stories.
Thank you, Megan. I have Karen Kiskemara, followed by Tammy, and then Janie.
If I may.
Sorry, go ahead.
So in terms of the benchmark aspect of things, I believe that the survey that we've actually developed in partnership is actually an incredibly valuable survey. The one that we've used previously doesn't actually lead itself to benchmarking either, just because of the branching rules and skip logic that are associated with it. But as Kathleen pointed out earlier, this is a survey that we're actually using as our new primary family engagement survey. And as we actually get enough districts to be able to provide a benchmark report on, which probably be maybe one or two more, then we will actually create a benchmark so that you can have that. We just don't have it at this moment. But the reality is, is that we've actually created a very powerful instrument to work off of going forward that's actually grounded in the dual capacity framework that Renee mentioned earlier, which is coming the gold standard of what Family Engagement Day is based on Karen Mav's work.
So Karen, Tammy, Jamie, is there anyone else who hasn't spoken who would like to speak as well? And I have Karen. Okay. Karen, go ahead.
Well, first of all, thank you guys so much. I really appreciate hearing from our principals and what's actually happening on the ground. I know I've had an opportunity to meet a number of you. And so I'm going to start with just areas where, well, I have a list of questions that I don't want to, the clock isn't on yet. I don't know if you want to time me.
You're not used to this.
I'm happy to just free fly, you know, just really good information. And I appreciate the differentiation per region, et cetera. I'm wondering at some point whether we might be able to differentiate per the type of information people are talking about, what their, you know, like how many requests we're receiving, or whether there's differentiation depending on whether these are families for special education, free and reduced lunch, Title I, et cetera. So that was just an observation. I realize that this is an ever-changing, fluid situation, so perhaps that might be helpful. So the next question I have is, I really liked the postcard, for example, you showed as one of the things. And the question that comes to my mind is whether with some of these initiatives, whether our staff is increasingly feeling like, okay, you're just dumping too much on me. And so how do we, how do we deal with that? If anybody wants to jump in, that's fine, I'm happy to, but I can just plow through these questions. I'd also like to hear whether you see a role in social media as to how we might improve some of these numbers and outreach. I saw a lot of email there. Some people may not particularly deal with, communicate in that way. And do you guys get an opportunity to share some of your successful strategies, such as the postcard? I don't know what the, you seem to believe that that's good and it looks like it to me. But I would love, I think, if I was sitting in your seat, to know what my neighbors are doing and rather than, you know, having to come up with it myself. With respect to community events, I think I heard you, was it Marshall or Hayfield, or you guys were talking about how you have these community events to try to improve community engagement? Please invite your school board members. We would love to be a part of that and come and help them to understand that we really want them to feel engaged. Dr. Ivy mentioned that you'll be meeting with the regions to talk about their particular needs. As an at-large member, I'd like to know where our problem areas are, even within the regions, right? So just want to make sure that we're included, not just in the overall numbers, but identifying where the problem areas are, as well as, you know, this region may be doing better in one area and not so good in another. Let's see. Oh, and also, this is my last question, had some concerns about the low percentages of various languages. I think it was on page four. And the highest, of course, was in English. And then we jumped, we got 26,000 or so for English, and then we go down, all the way down to 1,600. I know our numbers are good overall, but my concern is whether we're reaching those groups and hearing from those communities and how we might address that.
So I think David can share a little bit about the demographic data and the reason we did not ask for demographic data on the survey?
Thank you, Kathleen. Demographics within survey research is actually somewhat of a controversial topic for a couple of reasons. Reason number one is it can actually, when you're asking somebody how to identify themselves, it can make them begin to feel marginalized, and therefore they'll stop taking the survey. The issue, the second issue, is that it gets into an issue of confidentiality. If I start pinpointing myself based on a variety of different characteristics, perhaps now they can isolate who I am based on my response. And the third issue around it is you're then basing yourself on self-report. When we're doing like a staff survey or student survey where we're pre-populating data, it is something that we can do on the backend. However, when we're actually doing a parent survey and we've got that open link, we don't have that opportunity to pre-populate the data if we have it. So it's really something that we try to stay away from as much as we possibly can, especially when it comes to more controversial topics like gender or race, ethnicity, along those lines, because then maybe people may feel marginalized by asking those questions. So it's why we just stick with, stuck with the school-level question, because that's the unit of analysis, as the only demographic question in the survey.
I think, Dr. Ivy, did you want to add something?
I have a question, but I thought I'd use that one.
Yeah, but go ahead, if you have a quick one.
I particularly am concerned about our special education community, whether though, people with particular needs and the way we serve them. So I'm trying to figure out, how do we understand how well we're serving some of those communities?
As an interesting coincidence, my background is in special education research with parents engaging in the IEP process. Usually what you're looking for around that topic is a very much, a much different set of constructs around engagement with it. So all these questions would give you a very global response to that. It wouldn't get into the specificity of the issues within a special, within the parent of a child receiving services.
As far as sharing successful strategies, we have opportunities for principals to engage in learning during this school year. And one of the proposed topics is on family engagement, so that principals do have opportunities to talk about what has been successful in their schools. And especially with having the results from the family engagement survey, it gives us more data to be able to have those conversations. Jeff, did you want? Sure. And then Dr. Ivy, go ahead.
Just real quickly, to that very point, I know that principals within my pyramid, and I'm sure in other pyramids, will be looking at that data by pyramid because we share families as well.
And I just was going to add that the communication and building relationships with parents is basic education 101. And while we have the postcards and ways in which various schools may outreach parents, from the very beginning of our professional development, whether it's a brand-new teacher or principals with their staff, we encourage teachers and reinforce with teachers and all school staff to reach out and build a positive relationship. Make that phone call home. Introduce yourself. Give the good news so that when, if there is an issue, we already have a relationship and we can partner and work together, follow up afterwards. And so we try to build that in as that's our everyday work and the importance of it, rather than what's added to a list of things we have to do. And so that's part of culture, though, and building that culture. And we know in some places it's done better than others. In some places, it looks different and it has to be different. And so it's finding and figuring out the best way to do that. That's so important. And as far as the at-large reports, yes, we're going to highlight, it will look a little diff, we're going to take the highlights of the magisterial reports and give each at-large member the information that you're asking for, as far as where it's working well, where it isn't, broken down by region, pyramid, and school.
Thank you. I have Tammy, Janie, and then Karen Corbett Sanders.
Thank you all. And this really is a good news report for us. We do appreciate hearing from you. And for the principals, thank you for being here. And so when, most of my questions were actually answered. Some of them were on the survey results themselves and outside surveys and percentages. But what we're seeing, basically, a 13% overall for an outside survey, that is statistically very sound and valid, I, that's my understanding. So you can speak to that in a moment if that's, if that's not. I do want to, again, say thank you to the principals. You are our all-stars here about what we're doing in our areas that need a little bit more, you know, a little oomph, a little boost. As you see, you're laughing because you were so self-deprecating. You're like, oh, I had these great scores, and then I turned the page. But you know what? That is, that just speaks to, you know, how dedicated you are and all of you are. Alfonso, Mr. Smith, I always, I use Hayfield as a model when I say this is what community engagement needs to look like, because it is paying dividends for your school. I've seen that throughout my tenure here on the board, so thank you. You know, so very impressive, all the classes you offer as an elementary school. So I think, Dr. Ivy and Dr. Braybrand, you're here, you're listening, and I think that is the struggle for all that we do, making certain we take these best practices that our principals are showing us here. We take those, we use those, we implement them with fidelity. Frances, I think it's very important that we, as district board members, understand where our schools stand on this and how we can, if a school within my district needs additional help, you know, we have models right in the district that are saying, this is what we can do. So the one thing, Dr. Braybrand, too, a question for you, is I know we have changed some of the things, and this was before you came, but with parent-teacher conferences, you know, and what we can do to share information in a better way. I think some of the things were condensed, some of the time was taken away. I think, although elementary schools seem to be the best takers, but I know parent-teacher conferences were rearranged a little bit then. And I think what I would like us to do, and as a parent whose child just graduated two years ago, I see how, you know, you get less engaged, but that is sometimes that you don't know what you don't know. And sometimes you don't even know what to ask as you get to those upper levels when you're having six and seven teachers to have to deal with, and how is my child? And you're, I know, I'm done. But your interaction with individual teachers is sometimes limited to that back-to-school night. And how can we do that if a parent like me is feeling, felt disengaged and sometimes? How can we get those who are, you know, less involved than I was?
I'd want to say, this goes back to something Mr. Moon said at the beginning. This is not going to be the same old, same old. It's the first time ever we've collected parent engagement information system-wide. It's the first time ever our strategic plan in Fairfax County has had information of parent engagement as a metric. And you know what's monitored and tracked, what's measured, is what's going to get done. We've always had great supports. We've always had great best practices, but they've been in isolation. And for many years, our professional learning community was really addressed around how to do better on a standardized test than necessarily about how to engage our community and families better. The irony is, if we do that better, if we do that engagement better, we'll see improvement across a host of assessments, both standardized and alternative. On the second matter, I am open, and I know that principals did ask me really early on, but it's been two years. They asked me last year about greater flexibility to have early release, especially middle and high, something while I was away, I guess it was determined that that flexibility would not be allowed anymore. But I would love to engage the board in a conversation about giving, to the degree that they would ask for it again, an opportunity to have some flexibility to have an early closing or late opening for the purpose of parent engagement and parent conferences, especially at the middle and high school level. So that's something we can talk about, and maybe, maybe I don't understand all of what happened, but I'm welcome, I would welcome the opportunity to give principals that flexibility again, if it would be, would be provided by the board.
Thank you.
If I could, if I could just engage the participation question really quick. So when we look at that 13%, that's an estimated participation rate, and that's actually a low end. As a company, we typically look for 15% to 20% participation rate for parents. That 13% up there you see is of the email invitations that went out. That does not take into account the additional 7,500 that came in through the public link, because we don't know what the total number of responses could be. We can't actually come up with a firm participation rate. So we know that we got 13% off of the email, and roughly 33% of that 21,000, in addition to that, came in, an additional 7,500 came in outside of that. So that's going to push that participation rate much higher than what it actually is, but that participation rate is based on the email invitations. The other thing I'll share around it is that when we work with districts, particularly when we're doing such a broad family engagement survey, you have to take the time to build a survey-building culture. And so Fairfax County is doing everything they can in that direction where they're actually going to do something with the data. They will put out what they're doing with the data. And then when we come back and do the survey again, we'll remind folks what we did with the data. So those that didn't take the survey are more motivated to do so because they know their voice matters.
Great point. Thank you. Janie, Ryan, and Elizabeth.
Okay, first of all, I am delighted that we've done the survey and that we've done this with such depth. It becomes useful, because otherwise, we're very good at pushing stuff out, but it is really getting it back in. Everybody went to school someday by and large, and we always, you know, but you need to understand children today, you need to understand our schools today. And this is truly an important step to give us the information we need to inform us how to approve, how to really partner. So, you know, kudos for everybody here who has participated. I have to especially say how proud I am of Hutchinson, and I say that all the time. If Hutchinson can get these numbers and do what they do, it is the highest-need school in the county. It is one of the largest schools in the county. It has one of the best principals in the school, but Ray knows that, at least for me. It is just amazing, the partnerships and the community just wraps their arms around the children. But again, thank you, Ray. You run an amazing school. the children. But again, thank you, Ray. You run an amazing school.
Thank you. You know, one of the things I was really excited about this year, we also were asked, a couple of other principals and I were asked to present to the community, it was the Advanced Academics School Board Group, and it was all around family partnerships and the work that we were doing there. And it was really neat, the really high-need schools that came together and were sharing some of their successes was me, Mount Vernon Woods Elementary School, and also Riverside. And truly, many of the work that we were doing around the early needs of families was very similar at our schools. There was a lot of great success happening across multiple schools, which was really exciting. And it was also really exciting for us as principals to be able to focus on what we really care about most, which is working with people. And so much, you know, we do care about our achievement results, no doubt, and we're getting them. But that's not really in our, that's not really what's driving our heart. That's not really why we're there. We're really there to make a difference for people and for families. And so, by looking at the actions that we're doing, it helps us re-highlight our focus on our work that really matters to us most and why we're engaged in that job and the work. So, thank you.
Great. And one of the, sort of the interesting questions is families getting to know each other to support. And that's, you know, we've had some conversations and a little tweaking with how the building gets used in the evening, but it is understanding that the parents need to be able to get together to support each other and, like, the babysitter to walk them to school. So, that level of detail and the information in this survey is very, very important. I was pleased with the question about demographics. And it always concerns me that when we are always asking parents to self-identify their demographic, I'm always very concerned about the marginalization. All of my children are all multiracial from all over. And I know in hearing from my daughters, they don't like to always have to identify that. They aren't exactly sure what box to do. It's rather, we wanna hear from you as a parent, but as a school board, we need the demographics. So, I'm pleased to hear that we can get it at the backend, because we need to know that. But to not always force parents in a box, because the boxes don't always fit, or in their mind, they aren't sure what to do. My last question-
So, if I can just clarify that for a moment, we won't be able to provide that by backend. That's more for a student and employee perspective. We weren't able to pre-populate that. The best way to take a look at it is at the school level by proxy for demographic construction, but we left it out of the survey for just the, just the purpose, just the reasons that you just named there. But unfortunately, we won't be able to populate that.
But as a school board, we always need that information, because we have to make sure that we are, that we are doing what we need to do. But I appreciate how parents might see that. So, because we never want them to feel that we don't want them to participate. Last question. Interesting, at Hutchison, texting was one of the ways that people wanna be communicated, we know. Years ago, we figured everybody has an iPhone. So, regardless, everybody has an iPhone. That's great. Social media. We didn't talk about that. I know that our schools do a tremendous amount of social media, a lot of interesting stuff that goes up, but we did not, I don't know what we know about social media and how important or valued the parents are with that, but a lot of individual classroom teachers doing as well. So, that's my only question.
Anything about social media?
Just, that's been a challenging piece. We do have a new communication system that does allow text messaging again, which has really been important for us, because for a short time period, there was one that didn't offer that allowance. And so, it was very challenging for us to communicate with our families, especially because although we do emailing, many times our email addresses change over and over again, or our families may not have an email address, but they do have a cellphone. Sometimes our families, often they buy a cellphone that may last a month, and then that number is not current any longer. So, just the things that we would think are making things very easy, and we're trying to find ways to communicate, they're actually really challenging to keep up on how to do those. Another thing is, many of our families, when you're facing language minorities, is even if you do provide the communication, whether it's written in text or via email, they may not have literacy even in their own language. And so, I know Dr. Braybrand has been really strong with providing video communication messages with the community, and that's something that Hutchison has done for a long time as well, because we wanna make sure that families can see that. But the importance of having a system that does text messaging is really important for us, and we're glad to see that we have that back. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Ryan, Elizabeth, and then Karen.
If I could say one more thing about social media, just in the idea of the context of what we talked about with the survey of doing to instead of being done with, social media tends to be a primarily outbound communication tool. So, when you look at text or email, it does become a little bit more interactive than what we see on social media. It's a great way to share information, but as far as engaging in dialogue about child progress or what's going on at the school, it's not as prominent or as useful a tool.
Thank you. Ryan?
Thank you all. Can I ask Jeff to send the postcard around? I would love to see that. And I'm jealous that I never received a superb statesman postcard. Just to clarify, this is not a high-leverage strategy. I just brought it because it's something that works. Yeah, awesome. Thank you. And, right, right. And I want to speak with Ray a little bit on this beautiful packet that you sent us, and particularly this. And I'm curious, are these courses all specific to Hutchison, or are these some central, provided elsewhere? Or what is the situation?
One of the things that Jeff mentioned was Edje Futuro, and I think they did speak to the school board at one point, because they're very familiar in Arlington County schools. But they offer some great classes which are available, and multiple schools can get that, provided they have the funding to do it. But Edje Futuro has been phenomenal. And some of the classes that are on our list are new for us this year. They come through Edje Futuro, one of which is being the Participa class. It's specifically for Spanish speakers. But some of these classes are classes that we learned about through our parent liaisons, and Renee can speak to mostly. The Parent Project class, for example, Strengthening Families, or those are classes that they're often coming through with the parent liaison office, and Renee will be able to speak to. We've been supported by there. So, the contact is all listed through the POC column, but that's really how we've been able to make them happen at Hutchison. Some of them are through the Early Childhood Education Office, some of them are through family partnerships, and some are from Edje Futuro.
And they're all held at Hutchison?
All at Hutchison.
Wow. And how do you get the information out about these? Email?
Multiple, yeah, flyers through the text messaging system, honestly engaged partnerships with our parent liaisons. Sometimes it's from our discipline referrals, so it's, "You know, you have been here several times. Let's look at the strategies to help support your child's success," those sort of things. But it's not just having classes for, you know, raising a safe child or a child that's well-behaved, but also just bringing families together because kids are challenging. And how do they come together and talk about the challenges and how they're getting, you know, seeing their way around those obstacles.
And I know, I know, and Jeff spoke to this as well, other schools are doing this. And I think it would be great to have this kind of thing posted on the websites and, you know. And so, I think it would also be good for us to have a better sense of to what extent this is going on in all of our schools. I don't know how we quantify that, but-
We have an opportunity to better now standardize best practices for parent engagement across our system. And I know that Kathleen and Renee are committed to working with Frances and the RAS to make sure that happens.
Renee, did you wanna, go ahead.
Yes, I was gonna say, those best practices in terms of what's occurring at schools, we do collect that information to make sure that we know what's going on in terms of building the capacity of families. And as you know, we also have the Parent Resource Center where we offer over 60 workshops a year around a variety of concerns and issues to support our families.
Okay, great. So, thank you for that. And again, I would, if we could get just a fuller sense of how broad and deep this is within the school system, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth, and then Karen Corbett Sanders.
My first question is for our staff. In the presentation that was first delivered, there was, there's an indication that tomorrow, July 16th, there's gonna be a public press release and an announcement on the FCPS website. What are those gonna say?
So, we have worked with our communications office to create the press release. It is being reviewed one more time. We can certainly share that with you. It's pretty lengthy, but it's really a high-level overview of the Family Engagement Survey results. Additionally, what will be posted on the website is the survey results report, which you just saw. So, those will go up on the OPLFE website, my office website, as well as the family engagement part of the FCPS website.
So, it's, I still don't have an understanding what it's gonna say. It's just gonna be a giant overview. I mean, is there a takeaway that's gonna, what's the lead gonna be?
So, it's an overview of the survey results, and the, we're going to emphasize what was positive in the survey results and direct the press to the website where the full report will be published. I can send that out if you would like to see it prior to it going out to the press.
So, that, you know, that's the crux, is that we're gonna talk about what's positive. Look, I'm glad that this survey was done. More authentic engagement is good. I will tell you, in the presentation of the actual responses, I heard a lot of talk about what was good, and there was a lot of glossing over about what was not so good. In fact, there was just sort of skipping. And if we could bring up page 20 of this, part of my question is how the questions get developed in the first place, because driving a message starts with what questions you ask. We had a lot of people actually answer, I think probably statistically, on answering responses, 13% plus the additional 7,000. I mean, I think that's probably really high on a response rate, even, you know, on a non, you know, dipstick method. It's still probably pretty high. But my question is, how did the questions get developed? Who developed the actual questions? Did our staff do it? Did you do it?
Yes. So, we developed the questions in collaboration with K-12 Insight, and David can talk about some of the-
Okay. The general answer is you guys did it in collaboration. So, I will tell you, for example, the question at the bottom, "The school staff works with me to identify social and emotional skills that my child can develop to be successful." That's a loaded question. That is front-loaded. I'm not entirely sure, I think I'm probably, I don't know if Tom took it, there's only two people here at the table that have FCPS children. There's only one that has an elementary-age child. I took this survey. It was very difficult to answer some of the questions. And I felt like many of the questions were phrased in such a way to get me to answer in a certain way. And so, I struggle with the areas that are not as great, because they're actually what we already know, which is the collaboration with parents. Parents feel like the school system has gotten between them and their children in how they learn. It's the whole question about the FCPS ON, about the technology, about the removal of textbooks. These are things that we know, but I do think how we phrase the questions going forward on a successive, I don't think that we need to benchmark this and say, "We're just gonna ask the same questions next time." I think we have to be very careful about how we pose the questions and that we don't load them to get certain responses.
Thank you, Elizabeth. You are out of time. Would you like to go back?
You can put me on. I'll decide whether I want to, but I would love to hear my response.
Go ahead.
What, let me take the first piece. The system's 140 years old, and it's the first time we're taking a parent engagement survey. So, I think we're moving in the right direction. I also think the work with K-12 Insight that we've done, you saw in the presentation, and you heard Amelia mention, the schools got their top-performing questions, and the very next page, they got their lower-performing. So, I don't think we're sugarcoating the results. We have overall some high levels of success, but in a system with 190,000 kids and 10% are still not feeling respected, that's thousands of families. So, Ms. Schultz, I actually agree with you. I think there's room here for continuous improvement. And as far as the questions, I'll leave that to someone who's more the expert. But I agree, if there's questions that we think are creating false positives, if you will, that we can make those tweaks.
I mean, high expect, this, we moved off that. High expectations for my child, what does that mean? Are we about academics? We're not disaggregating actually the question to talk about, you know, what are the academic expectations versus, I mean, it's how the questions are poised to give us-
Right. And I would say if there are board members that have certain questions that they think maybe aren't getting at the community pulse, based on your experiences, we'd love to hear those, and we can share those as we work the consultant. We're looking to do this every other year. We would do our staff employment engagement survey next year, and then back to family and parent, and then switch every other year to sort of build the baseline as we do our strategic plan work.
And David will respond to the technical pieces of the survey, but we did have parent groups who worked with us on developing the questions. We also researched other surveys outside of FCPS. So, across the nation, we looked at a variety of survey instruments that have been successfully implemented. But I think David can speak to the technical pieces behind.
Sure. I brought up this slide because it actually shows the full distribution of responses. There's a couple of different pieces that went into it. As Kathleen said, the district came up with the first stab of it, and then my team and myself took a look at it to make sure that there was not necessarily any specific bias within the questions. Were you leading anyone one direction or the other? The way that we wanted to actually frame all the survey questions is you want the direction of all the questions to be unidirectional, which means an agreement is always a positive response. A disagreement is always a negative response. When you flip scale directions like that within a survey by asking it either way or another, people get set in a way of thinking an agreement is positive, and they go down, and they don't necessarily answer the question appropriately. One of the things that we have at the top here, if you'll notice the stem of it, is how strongly do you disagree or agree? We lead with disagreement because the scale ran from the direction of agreement to disagreement. So, we counteract the primacy balance by actually having disagreement first within the stem and agreement in the, as the first answer option. We actually had to phrase the questions in a certain, specific way. So, that's why we actually frame them in the positive way. But we do have that full scale of agreement to disagreement so that folks can automatically disagree. To Dr. Braybrand's point that he just made a moment ago, when you take a look at a 10% disagreement, you're talking about 19,000 people, potentially, if you were to generalize it. Within this survey, it's about 3,000 people. So, we get a sense that there is a fair amount of things to look at. And the other thing I wanna kind of address is that, you know, when we, when we sort of opened this presentation and we're talking through it, the whole overall theme of the opportunities for improvement, and we've been talking about this quite a bit with the principal-level meetings, is that whole idea of being done with as opposed to being done to. And I think that's something that, you know, the district has taken very ser, the division has taken very seriously to focus in on, is that there are some opportunities for improvement going across the board, which is sort of the whole impetus for the Making Feedback Matter workshops, because the school is the unit of analysis here, and that's where the work is gonna be focused, at least from the bottom up.
Thank you. Karen?
Great. And thank you, because, you know, we don't know where we need to go unless we know where we're at. And so, this survey was very instrumental in setting a baseline. So, I appreciate what you've done there. I do have some concerns as far as the representation in this survey, because those pyramids that are in the 2% to 3% of making up of contributions to the survey are also in the areas that have the highest FRM and the highest ELL populations. And when you look at the who actually contributed to the survey, there is an over, you know, when we say 13%, that's great. But then, when we look at who participated, the population of ELLs is pretty de minimis. And so, I would love to know from you all how you think we can better reach that, those parents, and how we can engage them even in getting their understanding about, you know, what they would like to see differently. Because a particular concern to me is the feeling of having it happen to parents versus having it, being parents' educational partners. And so, a couple of questions is, one, how do we reach out to those communities that had 2%, 3% contributing to the survey? Secondly, I would like to better understand how we can address the feeling of having it happen to parents and families, especially in our underrepresented populations. And the third, and perhaps the one that really hit home a lot, was the feeling that students, that parents feel their students' educational pathway is determined by the school system, and that maybe the school system didn't necessarily understand their child. And for a school system that says we wanna meet our children, know every child by name and need, I would like to better understand how we can start to address those concerns. And my- And my last comment is on timing. It was my understanding that the magisterial members were going to see this data earlier rather than later, and I hope that we're not waiting until September to see this data. This data should be shared with the board members, both magisterial and at-larges in the near term and setting up time with the regional assistant superintendents and the, before school starts.
We're going to do our best to make that happen before school starts. I think I was clarifying too. We'll reach out to each school board member to see preference. In some cases, folks might not be available, you know, due to the break, but we all try to honor that request.
Thank you. And this really is one where we can all partner together. And I did want to respond very quickly to Dr. Braebrand's question about the secondary level having half-days. I believe that that was a decision made by the superintendent and not by the, by the school board, but those of my colleagues who have been here longer than I could clarify that.
I'm going to take the participation piece first and it's just a matter of clarification. When we look at this 5%, 4% participation, that's not a participation rate, that's 5% of the 30,000 who took the survey. So, okay, I just wanted to clarify that, just to make sure. All right, excellent.
The one strategy I feel could be really helpful in the schools where they may not get a strong response rate given the language barriers, even if we send it out via text communications or email communication, families are confused as to what this is and who sent me this and I'm not quite sure I understand. So, one of the strategies that we did with anticipation to that was putting up computers in the front office of the school. And also, like when we did parent coffees and those sort of things, we had parents within the school. We told them what the survey was. Again, we explained what it was and we asked them if they would please take some time to go ahead and fill that out. Now, part of that was a participation issue, but part of it was that, "Hey, look, we're doing great things for our families and these people are really happy with our school and I hope that they're going to take a few minutes to capture that because otherwise it would be really sad to see what is put forward about our school." And so, they did respond very well to that. I don't know what portion actually just filled it out via the email link, but I would think our highest leverage strategy was actually having kiosks set up within the school so that we could tag on to those. And I would recommend that strategy.
So, you're the 7,500 promoter.
So, the other thing I'll say around that is that it's one of the reasons why we have the paper surveys as well because not every parent is going to be, feel comfortable, particularly in certain cultures, of taking an online survey. So, we actually had that paper survey available in all nine languages as well.
And we provide the schools a host of outreach opportunities, like Ray was saying, setting up your kiosk, your paper surveys, sending it out in multiple ways so that we could also gather as much as we could because we know those families that are disenfranchised, those are the ones we really wanted to hear from.
And I will also echo what Ray said as well. And I also think the first time you do something, people are not sure about what it is and what you're going to do with the information. So, I think we'll see more participation as we do this, you know, in another year or so because we also, whenever families came in, we asked them to do the survey for us and I sent it out. Like Renee said, they sent us a whole kit of how to get that information out and I still thought, "Wow, I wish we would have had more results," right? Even though we spent all of this time, but I think sometimes people are just nervous about it and are just not sure what it means and why should I do that and how is that going to impact my school and how's that going to impact that kid, I think.
We also had kiosks set up at the Special Education Conference trying to get responses there as well.
Jeff, go ahead.
And the other thing I would add and to echo, this is the first time we've done it, but as I in my own school look to increase the number of home visits that we have, to bring our school more into our community, I think that, you know, whenever this is given next in two years, that is an opportunity for us to perhaps get input from families who wouldn't otherwise come to us.
Thank you. I will speak briefly and then we'll go to go-backs. I did want to let people know, in the interest of time and because the draft policy was going to be fully discussed at a future date, I'll go ahead and ask my colleagues to please take some time to look at this initial draft. Feel free, I guess, to send questions to Dr. Duran. Are you leading this, Dr. Duran? And Kathleen? And anticipation and the chairs will work to schedule a time to actually discuss that policy. So, just want to make sure we have ample time for that. And then briefly, a lot of my colleagues shared what was said. Thank you. I'm, to me, this is the number one thing, right, that we need to focus on right now that I think will help us get to the next level. Karen and I were sidebarring and I don't know if it's allowed within the context of this, but the way we do our contest for student voter registration, if there are incentives and ways we can help incentivize our schools to get that little competitive edge going and try to increase participation for the next time. Because I think we do, especially, you know, whatever we do to engage parents who are most challenging to engage is going to be better for all, right? It's going to engage the most parents. So, it seems like this was an excellent first survey and appreciate the partnership with K-12. And then, you know, it seems like figuring out things that worked and things that can help us get more of our parents and more of the parents that we want answering this will be, will be key. A couple of things that completely agree with you, Dr. Braebrand, measuring, monitoring and tracking, that's what we need to do. We talk about this, that we do this and we know it's done differently at every school and trying to figure out what's working, how do we share those best practices and then how do we, you know, measure what we value? And I think we truly value this. I know for me, and having come here as a student whose parents didn't speak the language or understand how the system worked, it really does take a long time and the steps we take to support our parents and our families, especially ones who don't understand the system or need additional support, I think is critical. I'm with Ryan. I love this. I would love to be able to see this at every school and to be able to see, EduFuturo, I do a lot of work with them, they're excellent, and to see, you know, what is across the board. I don't know if we have a whole list of what courses we do offer and being able to know what's offered where, especially when parents come to us for us to be able to say, "Oh, you have this at your school," right? Or this neighboring school so that we can more clearly know what's being offered and where we can send people as a resource. And then finally, on the summer meals, I actually recently had a conversation with Dorothy McCullough who's, you know, on the Virginia organization working on this. And it seems that we're actually, it's pretty tricky trying to change some policies at the federal level. My understanding is it's required for us to, like, we can't just send a bus out, we actually have to see the student eating the summer meal, which is very challenging, counterintuitive. You know, so anything we can do and, you know, both at the federal and state level, it seems like, you know, being able to improve that system. I know there's a lot we're doing, but there's a big gap. So, I don't know if, if you've seen any other areas or things that we as a system could be doing to support that work. Grand Road was number one until we moved our program. So, it looks like, I'm very excited to hear that you have such an excellent summer program. I think that was all for me, but then if, you know, if there were any other final comments this principals or the team that you wanted to share, please go ahead and then I have four go-backs.
No, just as a food program has been great in support of our schools and I think some of the highest-attended sites are Mount Vernon Woods and also Bailey's Upper Elementary School. And I was only interested in seeing like what were the numbers that across other schools only because I just wanted to see, well, where were people really meeting the need that was there and what need exists? I thought it was interesting they keep track of both the number of students that are served there and also the number of adults. And I did think it was interesting because I was consistently, there was more adults served at the Bailey's Upper site than anywhere else and I just, I don't necessarily know why that is, but I thought it, you know, just kind of raised some questions for me and I'd like to look into those a little bit more. But no doubt, when our school has the most attendance at this, at the lunch, it's because we have other programs that are there. So, without the rec pack, without the summer programs that we fund, we typically serve about 100 students a day, which is still 10% and that's, that's really meeting a strong need. But they are great programs and when they are partnered with other programs that get the kids somewhere safe, that's even, makes it even stronger.
Thank you. So, I will try to do two-minute go-backs if we can. I have Illyon, Megan, Elizabeth and Karen Kiesgmar on the list. And if there are any final comments, please feel free to, to let me know or share.
Okay, mine should not take two minutes, but I'm looking at a one-pager, which is impact of family engagement strategies on student learning that was not presented this morning. But looking at, looking at what is in that elliptical area, green area, and, you know, most of those things require, you know, time on the part of our teachers, administrators to be able to work with the families and the students. And wondered whether our data collected from a family engagement survey would be somehow later on ultimately be linked to these basically information already available from Department Federal Level, USDA E, and whether we will be in a position or staff is going to recommend to the board to set aside, allocate some additional resources for the schools to be able to actually put many of these into practice.
So, that chart that you're talking about, Mr. Moon, that comes from the Department of Education. And in 2010, family engagement began to shift from family involvement. So, when the dual-capacity framework, in which is a framework that's used throughout the nation, in which we are currently implementing in Fairfax County, and that's the ultimate goal, that we use, utilize those high-impact strategies, getting family engagement away from an event. And once we have these high-impact strategies in place, we will see the results and they are directly aligned with the family engagement survey. And we saw that in our results, that some of our lower-impact strategies are not effective.
As far as resources that you asked about, first of all, want to thank the school board for elevating the parent liaison positions to contracted positions because that has been a huge help for our schools. So, thank you for that. But yes, we always need resources. I think we, you know, at the end of every year, we're counting our pennies just to balance our budget. So, resources are greatly needed for family engagement and I would say the majority of resources go directly back to schools. So, we would love to be able to support schools in additional ways.
Just as a quick follow-up, one of the things that I see in this as a, as a having high impact on student learning is, for example, home visits. I mean, I take home visits as mostly by classroom teachers as opposed to administrators. Classroom teachers, they are constantly struggling with lack of time on the other end. How are we going to be able to encourage more classroom, home visits if the teachers do not have enough time?
So, I would look to Mr. Litz to respond to how that happens at Marshall High School and then we can share some additional information.
So, Mr. Moon, I think you're right. It is very challenging to have teachers come visit homes and that's why I've utilized our parent liaison, our dean of students and our Sosa. Our Sosa, in, at least at Marshall, is someone that kids look to, that they can go to, that they can rely upon for support. I think we need to move toward, thank you very much for getting the light out of my eyeballs. I think it is something that we need to continue to look at in terms of how can we increase teacher involvement in home visits. But again, Ms. Kiesgmar alluded to this, we ask teachers to do a lot. And so, how can we, you know, utilize all of the folks who work in our building to be able to act on behalf of the school and reach out to our families?
Do I have additional 20 minutes? 20 seconds? I'm sorry, not 20 minutes. As, and just sharing with you that I, when I was in elementary school, that home visits by my classroom teachers was one of those occasions I really look forward to, to be able to share, you know, what goes on in my family, what I have on my mind. Same thing goes with my mother, to be able to share the same with the teachers. But in order for our teachers to be able to do that, they got to have more time. We need to provide.
Thank you. Thank you, Illyon. Megan, Elizabeth and Karen Kiesgmar.
Thank you. I appreciate that Mr. Moon brought up the issue of home visits as the daughter of a former teacher and how much we hear from our teachers. That was my primary concern was we have very large class sizes and I just simply don't see how we can be putting that on them. But also, as a social worker, I think it's very appropriate actually to be sending out people who have social work skills to go in and connect with families and find out what their needs are. So, I absolutely believe in the value of these home visits. That's part of the wraparound services to help students and families be successful. So, I think it's just a matter of finding the right model. I do want to just emphasize what Ms. Schultz said, that slide eight, where it showed where our lowest ranking indicators are. I think if we want the public to feel good about Fairfax County being transparent in the results, then I think if this is not part of the information we send out to the community, it will look as if we're just only telling part of the story. So, I think that will be important. The other thing is that there are 12 elected school board members. We all have these newsletters and I will implore the superintendent and his communications team to please build us into your execution plan so that we can be sending out messages to our communities, telling them about the survey, prepping them in advance of when it's going to be released, prepping them once it's been released, prepping them when it's about a week before it's going to close. We know we have to touch our families multiple ways and multiple times and I think we have to be viewed as part of that communications effort. In terms of my final two questions, number one, about the analysis, this isn't really a report, just to be frank. This is a, it's information about the data and it's fantastic charts, really appreciate it. But what I'd like to know is, number one, is K-12 Insight providing an internal analysis report to Fairfax County leadership? And if so, then I would like that provided to the board and discussion about provided to the public. If not, I'm going to ask that as far as the consulting work, we should have an internal report on the analysis because it's one thing for the public to see this posted.
Go ahead and wrap up.
Yep. And then my second question is that was there a comments or a free response section to the survey? And if so, how is that collected and how will that be provided to the board?
So, I would like to respond about the press release and I think I misrepresented it earlier. We are capitalizing on the positive information, but we also have represented the rest of the data in terms of what are some next steps for our consideration. I don't have it in front of me and so, I feel uncomfortable speaking to it since I don't have it in front of me, but if I remember it correctly, it's well represented, excuse me, it's well represented in terms of the positives and how it links back to our strategic plan and our caring culture goal, but what are some next steps that we need to consider as a division?
From the perspective of the report itself, this is our standard report that we've put out. We do have these key insights here that I sort of glossed over just because I covered a lot of them during my talking points. In addition to this, we've actually are creating a data table that shows a comparison of every school pyramid region as well to be able to see that. And we can also run some additional correlational analysis to see if there's any relationships between different materials as well. With only one demographic question, there's not a lot of cutting that we can do across the board, with the exception of what we did here, these sorts of things right here where we actually compared school level as well. But we'll take a deeper look to see if we can come up with some more, some more, some deeper metrics on this.
Yeah. The analysis I meant was just, you know, being able to give more context for everybody to understand when you've got deep drop-offs between maybe elementary to middle and, you know, what would you then be recommending as consultants to FCPS to address and work, work on those?
So, we can come up with some global recommendations, but a lot of that is that bottom-up work that's going on within the Making Feedback Matter workshops where principals were working to identify very specific issues to focus in on that. And during those sessions, in working directly with those principals, there were a lot of different comments that, you know, I provided as far as different things to look at and different ways to think based on the work as consultants that we see across the country.
Thank you.
And the comments section?
Yes, there was an open-ended comment. We're actually working through thematic analysis on that right now. We had over 10,000 comments, so coding that and going through that does take a considerable amount of time. But that is something where we're actually going to break that down as well by school level too because the issues that are experienced by a high school parent are going to be much different than the issues experienced by an elementary parent.
Absolutely. So, I want just the board to understand that would be my expectation that once that's made available to the superintendent, leadership team, we get a chance to see it too.
Great. So, we'll add that to next steps. Thank you. Elizabeth, Karen, and then we'll go to next steps.
So, I want to clarify my earlier comment. I wasn't asking about the structure of the way questions were asked in terms of giving a positive or a negative response. I'm talking about actually the questions and how they themselves are posed. So, you know, some of them have a great degree of clarity. You know, my child feels safe... You know, "My child feels safe at school." That's a clear statement. Others are, I'm not going to say they're intentionally muddied, but they tend to bring in a conglomeration of ideas as if to say, the question itself leads. So it's not the mechanics of the way the question was asked, it's the question itself. I do want to point out that in terms of the difference of the responses, I do think it would be helpful in a report like this to actually give the size of the different pyramids. So, I mean, we're comparing percentages of responses within a pyramid, but we're not seeing the difference of the sizes of the pyramids to understand what the real correlational difference is. I do agree with Megan that this is, this is information back to us. The question is the synthesis of it. And I do feel like something of this magnitude would have something more detailed behind it. I would have hoped for that. And then lastly, the notion that this was, these questions were developed, quote-unquote, "with parent groups." A lot of parents aren't in parent groups. And when you have a parent group, that it's usually a handful of representatives, they're often the same representatives year in and year out. And the ability to maybe develop questions like this with a focus group that is a cross-section of our parents and represents kind of the full body, I think, leads to a better instrument at the start, rather than we went to the same parent groups that we always go to and, you know, not a whole lot of parents are actually represented by those parent groups. Not fully.
Elizabeth, if you could wrap up. Okay.
So one thing I'll say in terms of question construction itself, as a first time with the survey, we weren't able to run any kind of psychometrics on it. And now that we've run it, we certainly can to identify what the factor loadings are on each of these items, what the reliability of is associated with it, so we can get a sense of, you know, where we, where things are great and where things need to be developed. We may be pleasantly surprised in terms of how people interpret different questions and how the dimensions work, but it is something that as a first time with the survey, you don't have an opportunity to do until you have the data against it.
Okay, thank you. Karen, go ahead.
So I want to just, what I'm hearing overall is that we're really working to create a new culture of how we communicate and how families communicate with our schools. And so for that, I'm very grateful. And I realize that this is a, sort of a first step of that process. So I think that's really, really good. And if that didn't come across in my first comments, I wanted to make sure it came across this time. So I also agree with Ms. McLaughlin and some of my other colleagues with respect to what does this mean in terms of how we go forward. I am particularly concerned because I work with a number of students, a number of children, and I realize that there are communities who perhaps may be afraid to talk to schools or they, they have a different belief system with respect to education because of where they came from. And so I would like to see a plan or recommendations on how we're reaching out overall. I think Hutchinson has done perhaps, you know, looks like a great job. But how do we, how do we create that across our counties? Other recommendations that I'm interested in, and I am going through what I think are my next steps, is where can, you know, specifically where can we improve? I think that this is a type of report, but I'm always looking for what those action steps are and how do we bring our staff members in. I mentioned earlier, I'm always concerned about what is that burden that we're placing on, on our teachers and how do we deal with that? And what kind of guidance we can provide to our staff? So those are my primary concerns is what's next, right? This is great information. I think we can work on some of our questions. I agree with all the comments. This is a great start. Dr. Bray-Bran, thank you for initiating this. But primarily, I'm looking at, okay, what's next? And how can we make sure that we're reaching some of those regions where we got less of a response? What's the plan? When we look at the negatives here, then what's the next step to improve those?
I don't know if you want to answer a little bit while we pull up our formal next steps, if there are some main takeaways from your office, Kathleen or...
So as I had mentioned, that one of our principal learning sessions for this year has the proposed topic of family engagement. So to dig a lot deeper into the data and to be, to allow principals to share their high-leverage strategies, just as you heard today, I think it's such a valuable opportunity for others to hear from people who are doing the same work. And so that is one of those opportunities that we would present. As far as the plan for reaching out to families, we did, when Renee, two years ago, I think it was, did some pretty comprehensive focus groups and went out to a number of communities that we felt were underrepresented and did gather data. And that data did help to inform some of the questions on the survey. But I think we could probably do more in terms of reaching out to families who may not have responded to the survey. So we'll put our heads together and we'll come up with a plan to make sure that those families who are underrepresented have an opportunity to have their voices heard.
And if it's not implicit, the board wants to hear what that plan is. Okay, thank you.
Because we have all you here, I don't know if there are any final, you know, comments or remarks you want to leave us with before we do go on to next steps. And principals, feel free to stay or head out as well.
Well, I think Ms. Keys-Gamarra said exactly what I wanted to say. This is a historic first step for Fairfax County at a systems level to collect data about parent and family engagement, to provide workshops and support to principals around the data, and then to move forward about how we implement best practices. So in some ways, where I hear board members is what's our implementation plan? What's our response to the data? What is our response to the data? And we are going to set up a more standard way of sharing these best practices and working with our region offices. Just like we're going to show the region data with you all as board members, we're going to be sharing that with our principals and working, as Amelia told you, to embed that because the strategic plan that you approved has these metrics now as part of what you need to look at. And what's monitored and measured gets done. So I think that's a big step forward. And we may have opportunities not to make it more complicated. I know we haven't voted on the calendar yet, but we may want to put an eye to parent engagement as we look at the school calendar for 2021 and to create time for learning walks. In the district I was in before, some of those days before school started were designated days to have community engagement take place. So I think there's some things that we can think about as we move forward that the board can do in partnership with the administration to really help accelerate what we've started today.
Thank you. David or principals, I don't know if you have any final thoughts?
The final thought I'll share is Renee referenced earlier, and it's been referenced several times throughout, the dual-capacity framework, which is ultimately the gold standard for family engagement. It's based on a very comprehensive review of the peer-reviewed research around the components of family engagement and their relationship to student achievement. So to take on that and then frame a survey around where strengths and areas of improvement may be, related to that research-based framework is a very great approach to be able to see what can we do differently within the county to build family engagement and hence improve its impact on student achievement. So to see Fairfax County doing this as a first sort of trailblazer around this is something magnificent to see and not something that we see a lot of times in the work that we're doing around having that peer, that direct, that connection between peer-reviewed literature all the way to survey and then implementation into action.
Thank you. Go ahead.
And I know it's going to be very helpful for us, just as student leaders, as we're working with our teachers and talking about the engagement piece to start the school year with, as we're getting ready to start again, just in making that a priority with our teachers and that it's not just something that's coming down that's top-heavy from leadership, but that our parents have spoken, you know? And it gives us a starting point to have some conversations with our teachers about that need, not just from our perspective, but for them to hear, you know, this is important to our parents as well. So particularly those areas of need, I don't think I'm the only principal here where, as we're looking at the data, a lot of times when we're hearing the positive and we're hearing the kudos from everyone here, which we do appreciate, but we do tend to look at, okay, well, what do we, what can we do, what can we do better? And so as we look at that data, that's something that I know that we're going to take to heart and use as we start this school year.
Thank you.
I echo that. I appreciate having concrete data to be able to share with my staff and my community. I think we all have worked very hard as individual schools around family and community engagement, but having concrete data to be able to take a systems approach, I think ultimately will lead to improvement more quickly.
Thank you. And I apologize, Renee, I don't know if you had anything else you wanted to add. Thank you for being here. Thank you all. So we will go ahead and look at next steps. Can we get a tiny bit larger? Maybe I'm not seeing well today. Okay. Thank you to our principals. Thank you. So number one, Karen, does that look okay? How can we better reach out?
I actually think we can merge both one and two together. And I also think we can merge three and at the very end Karen Keys-Gamarra's comment on what do we need to do next, because that was really what we're trying to get to. So it's how can we better reach out, how do we plan to reach out to the regions with lower responses?
Okay, so one and two, if you're okay with that, Karen?
Well, I actually think, Karen, I get what you're saying, but I think sometimes it's easier to keep it simple. So, yeah, just...
Keep it separate?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead. So one, you're okay?
I'm fine with that. And I'm fine with your next one too, Karen.
Karen, does yours look okay? Yes, okay. Number three, Karen?
How can we address feelings of some families feeling like things are done to them? Versus done with or collaborating with them. I know...
So they need to add the word "things."
Yeah, the actual language out of the survey is what I would use.
David, I know you'd said that earlier.
Yeah, and that's more of a...
That's more of a global theme than it was a specific one. So that's, that's sort of a takeaway from across a variety of...
What language did you use?
Parents feel like they're being done to instead of done with.
Oh, it was that.
It was that language, yeah.
Talking about education.
Instead of...
Correct. As far as their interactions with the school, done to instead of done with.
Right. And so it's having their educational objectives done to.
Correct. They're not being partners in the process.
Versus being done with and partners, as partners in the process.
Okay. Perfect.
Maybe even say and partners in the process.
No, no.
As, okay. That's fine.
Okay. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Was trying to get to the crux of that.
Thank you. Number four, Ryan? Looks good. So we're looking at classes offered anywhere throughout the system and then I wanted to see school-specific, if that's okay? Okay, perfect. Number five and six, or Megan?
Yeah, I mean, as long as Scott understands what we're asking, I mean, it's, it's not just adding the newsletter and the communications plan, but, I mean, we just need more timely and direct communication between the superintendent and the school board on the engagement survey. Yeah, when it's being done and making sure we're...
Collaborative communication plan with board members? Okay. Perfect. And number six?
Yeah, you can just say to ensure. So add school board member newsletters to ensure a collaborative communications plan. And then I think number, number six is, looks fine.
Perfect. Thank you. Elizabeth, number seven? Thank you. And number, oh, bless you, number eight, Karen Keys-Gamarra.
As long as they understand, I think that's appropriate. And then I have one that's not on there.
Sure, go ahead.
I had mentioned reaching those communities who are, who may be less inclined to interact with the schools, a plan for addressing that, those communities. I'm sorry, you couldn't hear me? People don't usually say that. Okay. Reaching those, a plan for reaching those communities who are less inclined to engage in the survey. I guess it's probably the shortest way to say it.
Could I look at number one? I just have a question. What's the difference between nine and one? I can't remember. Because isn't that what you're... Yeah.
So do you, by communities? I think if we define what we mean by communities?
Right. I'm talking about, there are cultural differences in communities. They may be, they may be from parts of the world where education is not as readily available and they don't see education as a right. So these are addressing specific cultural perspectives, whereas I think what Ms. Corbin Sanders is talking about is more general in terms of those regions where you have a lower...
Imperiums.
Right. But mine...
Actually, I raised it in my comments that those were the regions that had the higher ELL and demographic differences, but I agree with you that that's part of what we need to do. Because when you look at the participation rates, we have three times the participation rate in some communities. And then if you ask for a 13%, as the overall participation rate, we have in some subsets less than 3%.
If I can recommend some language around that, because it encompasses both, it is that greater participation of hard-to-reach populations. Hard-to-reach is typically the sort of the umbrella term that would get, I think, at both of those.
I hear you, but I want to just make sure, and as long as it's understood, I'm talking about identifying those particular cultural beliefs that we need to address.
I think your point is, there could be areas where there was a high response rate, but still have significant number of populations that have these cultural perspectives and not to get caught in the percentages. I understand what both, both of you are saying and we'll take care of it. We can address it. Don't erase it, though. I'd keep what you've got to help us.
Okay. Thank you so much. We have a closed session.
Closed session.
So, Ms. Farinah Kovacs and Mr. McAlveen, if you could come out for one second to vote on this, it would be appreciated, please. Okay. The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to consult with legal counsel regarding litigation in specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711a, 7 and 8A of the Code of Virginia, specifically Doe versus School Board Case Number 119CV00917. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLaughlin, seconded by Ms. Schultz. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you. We're now in closed session.